Hi, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to Real Talk. I'm your host, Pat Terrio, and we are here at Dublin City Hall for the city council meeting where the youth city council members are being sworn in. And of course, we're here with some individuals who are the brainchild and also the individuals who are making sure that this comes to pass. They're going to talk to you a little bit about this council and what made them decide to want to bring it here to Dublin Lawrence County. We'll start with the former councilman Julie Drigger. How are you?
I'm fine, thanks. How about you?
Doing very well.
Marvelous.
All right, now you've done so many great things for the community and to bring a youth council here.
Thank you.
Tell us about that, please.
Well, while I was affiliated with the youth council so many years ago, too many to number, I wanted to bring a youth council to the city of Dublin so that our youth would get trained on being council reps before time for council reps. Plus, we'd have their input as to what it is that they really wanted to see in the city of Dublin that would help them. So this is one of the things that I thought about. Now, when I first brought it up to the council, we had a different council than we have now. And at the time, I wanted an elected council. I wanted it to experience everything that we had to experience to be elected to a position. And so the council did not, at that particular time, want to go into the election process. They just wanted to pick somebody or let the school pick somebody and go with that. But I thought it would be much more beneficial to the youth for them to elect their representatives, you see? And that way, they would get the support of the representatives within the community, and it would enhance others to want to be involved in the community. This was something that I thought about even before I thought about the teen court program. The youth council was the thing that I wanted to implement first. But if they didn't go for the youth council, that's okay.
That's all right.
We'll go with another program as long as we get the youth in this community
Right, right, right.
involved, and that's the sole purpose. See, with the youth council, they had an election, and I'm going to let some of the board members talk about that and bring it up. But this was a brainstorm that I had some years ago, being on city council with a different council than we have now, but they were most acceptable to the idea this time.
And you're talking about the youth actually doing this. This is definitely part of that kinesthetic, hands-on thing where you're having the ones who actually voted. It made them feel as though they had a part in this as well.
Exactly.
All right. Now, listen, what we're going to do is we're going to let you two introduce yourselves and tell us about this whole process, okay?
My name is Tammy Howard, and I'm a teacher at Dublin High School. I'm also on the youth council commission with Ms. Deborah Stanley, Mr. Keith Griffin, and two council members, Mr. Benny Jones and Mr. Gary Johnson.
Very good. All right, sir?
My name is Keith Griffin. I work with the Call Vincent VA Medical Center.
Now, tell us about what you all had to do in order to help make this come into fruition.
All right. As a teacher at Dublin High School, of course, we had to educate the students about what the youth council was going to do. And the first thing we had to go back to is back to our social studies curriculum, letting them know how important it is to vote. So being able to discuss with our students the election process, being that this is an election year, and giving them the opportunity to experience going through what adults experience every year who have an election was just great. And having them go and sign up for IDs, having them provide their ID when they vote, as well as sign and actually do their vote was a great experience for them. But we also had campaigning, being in a city where we had some races in the city council area in the previous years. They've been around our school and in our district. So our students would see some of the councilmen campaign and hold up signs as they were going to school in the morning and leaving in the afternoon. So having the students that they were going to be voting for for the youth council to actually campaign that same way. And we had campaign areas where they would go by their ward to see who was actually running. And we used pictures so they would know what students were actually running for what particular ward. So by the time election came, our students already made up their mind without having someone tell them who to vote for, who they were going to vote for at lunchtime. We played videos from various candidates on what they would do if they were elected to the youth council. And it was just an enjoyable experience to see those students come out after lunch talking about who they planned to vote for. And then, when we actually did the election day, it was just great to see our students because we were not only able to have them vote for the youth council, but there were seniors who hadn't even registered to vote yet.
Yes.
Who were getting the opportunity to register to vote, and hopefully, they'll be able to vote in this presidential election coming up and even local elections that we have.
This is so wonderful. Mr. Griffin, what was your part in this?
Well, as a member, just like Tammy was, one thing we did, we worked hand-in-hand with the city council. We worked with the city manager. We brought maps out to the school. We had to let the students realize what particular district that they live in in order to know what district to run for. And of course, we have, the council mirrors our council. We have a mayor, we have three at-large positions, and then we have individual ward positions. So we had to get them to understand which particular area that they lived in and which ward they can run for. And the at-large individuals, let them know that they're running citywide. So they're representing everybody in the city.
Fantastic. Now, listen, how important, Ms. Drigger, is this for, to have the youth doing this, you know, and at the capacity it is? How important is it for the youth's voice to be heard within the community?
It's very, very important because this is our future. If they are not trained properly in what needs to be done and how you're going to go about doing it, you know, we kind of fall short, and we didn't want to fall short. And I want to mention that when I retired, I did not want this project to fail. Each year, before I retired, I would bring it up about having a youth council, each year. And when Benny Jones, who is the current council member, came on board, I talked with him and I told him, I said, "Mr. Jones, each year, talk to the council about having a youth council."
You did not give up on this.
I did not give up on it. Each year, we had to talk with the council about giving a youth council. And so I guess you have to wait for the time.
Right, right.
You see?
And the season of it.
And the season of it. So I think this is the season and the time to have that youth council, and it comes in handy, very handy, in educating our children. And our youth are getting very, very educated in that capacity.
They really are. And to see how you're collaborating with the teachers, with the city council members, with the community is so necessary.
Necessary.
And they're getting involved, they're being aware. For one, this helps them with their self-awareness, what their opinions are. To know that their opinions matter and to be able to give them a platform for that is outstanding.
Exactly. It's outstanding. And like Councilman Johnson said earlier, he's heard some of the things that they want to bring up. Streets need paving, you know? Delapidated housing needs to go away, and a lot of stuff. And I know they're going to see this, but I also want them to think about some things in terms of recreation for them as well.
Right, right.
So we're definitely very, very much pleased with what's happened so far, and I know they're going to do a great job.
Absolutely.
Marvelous.
And you know, and we're going to get to talk with them in just a few moments. Is there, are there any last words that you all want to give about this whole process? Because we do know that this has been a tedious journey.
It's been hard work. It's been really, really hard work, but it's been a great experience. We have had our school buy-in at Dublin High School with various clubs, being able to support our students with things like providing them stuff to campaign with as far as posters, the rooms that they can use as far as computers, being able to use those labs to create the designs they want for their commercials. So we thank all of our clubs, Student Council, FBLA, the Technology Club, as well as JROTC, because they have all supported us throughout this whole process at Dublin High School.
Fantastic. Mr. Griffin?
I would just like to thank the city council, thank the Registers Office, Ms. Rooks. She was a big hand in helping us put the election together. And mainly, I want to thank the Board of Education, Dublin Board of Education and Dublin High School. We actually had the election at the media center there, and it was outstanding. And I think they're going to do wonderful things for our community.
Fantastic. Yes, ma'am.
We have one other person that's in our midst that worked diligently with Tammy that maybe she has, might would have something to say, you think?
I think she would. We'll speak with her in just a minute. We're going to pull up, pull her up here. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be back in just a moment. This has been Ms. Julie Drigger, Tammy Howard, and Keith Griffin. They worked very hard to make sure that the youth council did come to pass, and here it is, ladies and gentlemen. You're going to be able to meet those young men and young women after this commercial break.
Raise your right hands, please. I want you to repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your names individually.
Kishimaus.
Jervis Spikes.
DeBuchawka.
Dan Harre.
Deanna Heinz.
Mary McGraham.
Selinta Staley.
Zeporia Charleston.
Kennedy Blackwell Lewis.
Kiana Jones.
Rick Page.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Uphold.
Uphold.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the state of Georgia.
And the state of Georgia.
And that I will.
And I will.
Obey the laws.
Obey the laws.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Dublin.
Of the city of Dublin.
And the bylaws.
And the bylaws.
And rules.
And rules.
Of the city.
Of the city.
Of Dublin.
Of Dublin.
Youth council.
Youth council.
And I will.
And I will.
Faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
And discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Incummin upon me.
Incummin upon me.
Me as a member.
Me as a member.
Of the youth council.
Of the youth council.
Fairly.
Fairly.
Honestly.
Honestly.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skills.
And ability.
And abilities.
And then, and as to mine.
And as to mine.
Shall, excuse me one second, seem to, I don't have a glass, one second, please. As to me.
As to me.
Shall seem.
Shall seem.
To be.
To be.
For the best interest.
For the best interest.
And the welfare.
And the welfare.
Of the city.
Of the city.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Or affection.
Or affection.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Your duty is sworn. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
I'm Marcus Clements with Clementson King Insurance. Are you a senior adult? We offer life insurance now for those through age 85. Don't leave your family with the final expenses they cannot bear. Call us today for a life insurance quote from Clementson King Insurance, local people serving our community.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back. We're talking with the Dublin Youth Council members, and of course, we've got one of the other advisors that helped make this come into fruition. We're going to let her introduce herself and give some special thanks to some of the people that were involved.
I'm Pam Ingram. I'm a teacher at Dublin High School, also FBLA advisor at Dublin High School.
And tell us about some of the work that you did to help, to assist Ms. Tammy Howard.
First of all, I want to thank Tammy Howard for her hard work and dedication to Dublin High School. She did most of the work. I just assisted her with that. We helped with the voting process, getting everybody signed in, also for the voter registration and them submitting the ID for the day of the voting.
You know, that's so much work, especially at their age. Like, that's huge. I can remember when I graduated from high school and they talked about, well, oh, you know, it's time for you to register to vote. We'd be like, huh? Voting? You know, and so it's, times have changed in the past 30 years, for sure. And now that you've got youth that are definitely more proactive and being a part of the community this way is a wonderful, wonderful thing.
Another way that some of the youth helped is we actually helped tally the votes as well, along with Ms. Deborah Stanley and also the other people who were helping at that time.
And you want to definitely thank Dr. Kellogg, the principal at Dublin High School?
Yes, I want to thank him for his support. Also, I'd like to thank our superintendent, Dr. Fred Williams, as well.
Absolutely. It definitely has taken a village and to see how everyone is working and working so well together. And I also want to give a special thanks to all the parents out there who have definitely supported their children because it takes a lot. Because when you're involved, as I say this often, when your child is involved in a lot of things, they really do need the support, a backbone from their home. And so it's nice to have parents who really care and are definitely pushing their kids for greatness.
One more thing, I would like to thank the faculty and staff and also the other student organizations at Dublin High School for assisting in this event as well.
Absolutely. Doing great things at Dublin City Schools. All right, Ms. Ingram, thank you for everything that you do, the work that you do, and you and Ms. Howard working so well together.
Thank you. I appreciate you and TV 35 for covering this as well.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure of us, for us to be here. All right, we're getting ready to meet the other, the city council members. Thank you, Ms. Ingram. They're going to come up. We're going to let them introduce themselves to you, tell us what their position is. Come on in right here, sir. How are you?
I'm doing good. How are you doing?
All right, very well. Now, listen, the floor is yours, sir, Mr. Mayor. Is that, can you actually grasp that?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead. You're like, no problem.
My name is Jervis Spikes, and as she said, I am the mayor of the double city youth council. I'm just really here to just let our youth's voice be heard. In many cities, their voice is not heard, their opinion doesn't really matter, and we're trying to get that known in this city and make change because the, our youth is the next generation.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Now, Mr. Mayor, when you first decided, okay, I'm going to run for mayor, what went through your mind, knowing what you had to go through in order to get to where you are?
I wasn't sure about it. I was not sure about it. I knew I wanted to do it, but it was like something, maybe a little fear, but more curiosity that made me want to, you know, see, because if I didn't do it, I didn't want to have a what-if moment in my life.
Right, absolutely. Well, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Now, I want to ask you this now. In what way do you think that you being in this position is going to be a benefit to our community?
Um...
Because it could have been anyone.
Yeah.
But it's you. So in what way do you see yourself as definitely being a positive influence on the community? And who you, let me answer that for you. Let me answer that. You being who you are and knowing that the youth need to have a voice, and you're that mayor, that person, that outlet to help get that voice out there, a lot of different changes that can be made in the community, and you're in a position to do that.
Yeah.
Did I say that right for you?
You did. You said any more words than I could.
I just wanted to make sure that you're going to have to pay me later now.
Yeah, I got you.
I mean, am I your press secretary or what?
Yeah, you made it.
Okay, I'll take it. All right. Thank you so much. This is Mr. Mayor. The mayor's a loss for words, ladies and gentlemen, so we're just going to help him just a little bit. Hey, young lady, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing very well. Introduce yourself to us, please, and tell us about you.
My name is Zeporia Charleston. I attend Dublin High School. I'm a senior. I am the captain of auxiliary. I am a part of teen court, and I plan on doing a lot of organizations.
Very good. Now, tell us about your position here with the city council.
I am the representative of Ward 1. I, although I live on Park Day Road, and my ward consists of South Side and Scottsville.
If there was one thing that you could do or say to change things in a positive manner in your ward, what one thing would that be?
First, I will listen to my youth and I'll get their decisions, but as far as what I could do to change it, I'll just get their opinions.
Okay, very good. And you know, they're going to have some very outlandish things now.
Yes, ma'am.
They're going to want you to, you know, do some things that you might not be able to do. I mean, would you be able to handle that?
Um, I feel like I would. If I, probably if I wouldn't, they wouldn't have voted for me, so they know I can do something.
What if they asked for a Krispy Kreme over there?
Oh, well...
I mean, that was me on the inside, but you just have to be prepared, don't you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and you just started, so it's a process, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Congratulations on your new post.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Come on down. A Krispy Kreme would be nice. I think I'm going to have to write that on a suggestion card to Mr. Mayor. How are you?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Very good. My little niece here, introduce yourself, if you would.
My name is Selinta Stanley. I am a junior at Dublin High School. I participate in ROTC, and I'm also a defense attorney for teen court.
Defense attorney, mm. So you could be pretty stern and sharp, huh?
Well, that's actually for the prosecution. The defense attorney also, like, defends people, so I'm pretty, like, much on the nice side.
We're going to let her believe that, ladies and gentlemen. Tell us about what your position is right now with the city council.
I represent Ward 2. When I got into this whole thing, my motto was to help the people, because when you help the people, you can have a better community. When the people are better, like, when the people in the community is better, you can have a better community.
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, is there anything on your agenda that you would like to see different?
Um, new apartments.
New apartments, very good. Anything else? Krispy Kreme, maybe?
Maybe.
You know, if that happens, I'm going to just definitely give the youth council a high five. Well, how long, how was your process in getting ready for this?
It was pretty hectic. At first, I wasn't, like, really feeling it, but in the end, it all came together, so...
And here you are.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Keep doing great things. Very good. All right, who's next? They're coming right along, ladies and gentlemen, right along. Well, hello, hello.
Hello.
Introduce yourself to everyone, please.
My name is Deanna Heinz. I'm representative of Ward 3. I go to Dublin High School, and I'm a senior this year. My whole slogan for this campaign has been bringing arts and theater program to Dublin.
I heart you so much.
Basically, I feel like there's a lack of arts in our city because our schools are disconnected because we have West Lawrence, East Lawrence in Dublin and Trinity, but bringing one in the center of town will allow all the students to get together and display their talents to not only Dublin, but any other surrounding counties who want to see.
I'm going to squeeze you just a little. I love that, I love that. And that's so, so good. That's such a good platform because what the arts do, creative arts, are quite healing, and they definitely do bring people together.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me know how that goes. Let me see what I can do to help.
Yes, ma'am.
Love, love. All right, now, your process, how was your process in actually running for this council?
Well, I knew I wasn't big on making campaign posters because I'm not the best drawer, so I went with my own talent, which is working with technology. So I made two to three campaign videos, and Ms. Howard let them play during lunchtime so everyone in the student body could see them. And I also made hair ties. Me and my friend, May Lee Warren, we made hair ties to give out during the field day that we had after we all passed our Georgia milestones.
Very good. That was like a reward. Now, so you guys were talking about some really great things. You're talking about actually listening to the people, apartments, you know, better conditions, and also with the arts, bringing that in. That is fantastic. And to be able to present that in the arena that you all in are in with youth council, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Super impressed, ladies and gentlemen. Here we go.
Hi.
Hi. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Doing very well. Okay, it's your turn.
Okay.
Talk to us.
Well, my name is Kennedy Blackwell Lewis. I'm now a senior at Dublin High School. I'm involved in many different things such as FBLA, Student Council. I did Quiz Bowl. I finished my year in F, not FBLA, LYL, Lauren's Youth Leadership, and I'm also going to Harvard this summer for a summer school program, so I'm very involved.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
That's huge. How are you keeping everything, you know, I always talk about this, how do you keep everything flowing? How do you keep everything balanced? Because you're involved in a lot of different things.
Honestly, my mom is such a motivation. She's always on me, and when I let her know what I have to do, she helps me stay on top of it.
You guys wouldn't make it without us moms, would you?
At all. I think we're done.
Well, congratulations to you. Tell us what, what area you're working in here with the city council, and tell us about something that's dear to your heart that you definitely want to, to see changed.
Well, I represent Ward 4, so that's the area close to Dublin Middle School, around there. And I'm very educationally driven, so when I was hearing that we had a lot of younger children, pre-K and kindergarten, failing those years of school, that really hurt my heart because you cannot advance if you can't start in the foundation.
Right.
So what I would like to see is some mentoring programs for the younger children, someone to look up to and someone to motivate them to keep going.
Fantastic. And another thing I want you to add to that, too, is what I found in teaching middle schoolers is that so many kids in middle school cannot write in cursive.
Yes, ma'am.
I couldn't believe that. I remember, like, the way we were growing up, we actually had handwriting where you had to practice, sit and practice, and over and over. We had what you call a chalkboard. Ever heard of that?
No, but we had something similar. We would have little cursive worksheets and stuff like that.
No, that's fantastic. And so what we're learning now is that kids are having a difficult time even writing their names in cursive. Some of my students say, well, I can write my first name, but can't write my second, my last name. And so with your mentorship program, that would definitely help them in that area. Fantastic.[1472.21] So, find time to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Aside from your Harvard homework, okay? Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Very proud of you, young lady. Naima, come on, sweetie. I've been knowing this one right here since she was a wee baby. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing very well. All right, introduce yourself to everyone, and let's talk about your platform, if you would.
My name is Naima Graham. I'm a new senior at Dublin High School. Um, I'm involved in numerous clubs and organizations, such as Beta Club, FBLA, Art Club, which I didn't know I was a part of until yearbook pictures.
You let, you just looked at it as like, oh, my God, that's me. Okay, I think I need to do more then.
Quiz Bowl, um, and I also have participated in volleyball since I was in ninth grade.
Very good, very good. Tell us what your position is here with the city council.
I am one of the three representatives for at-large.
So, that's the entire city?
Yes, ma'am.
O M G. All right, so talk about some things that you, uh, want to see differently, or some things that are kind of heavy on your heart. You've, some have talked about, uh, the arts, mentorship, uh, you know, facilities, uh, being, you know, revitalized and, and built. What, what is your platform? What would you say something that's dear to you?
Well, I was riding around Dublin just generally, and before I was on the council, I would look at things and say, "Oh, that needs redoing," or "That place could look a lot better." And now that I'm on the council, I feel as though I can do something about old, rundown buildings and places where weeds are growing up and vines. And I think the city needs more beautification, not only in its downtown area, which it has done a fantastic job of doing, but in other places. And as far as things to do, I often hear people that live here talking about how bored they are and how they need something to do.
Yeah.
And so, I want to bring more entertainment here.
Yes. What kind of entertainment would you bring here?
Well, as Deanna, um, was talking about, a center for the arts for children and for teenagers, and for other adult, things for adults to do. I'm not an adult yet, but I can ask other adults what they like to do.
We like a lot of stuff. A lot of stuff. And you know, I think that would, we think that'd be wonderful, because that would give them a place to go to, instead of just being idle or being at home. And, and this gives them a place to go to where they can interact with other people, right? And to be able to be involved in things that they normally would not even be involved in. So, it's kind of really helping the community become more culturally diverse, wouldn't you say?
I would say that.
Very good. And then the revitalization, I mean, you've got, uh, you know, the, the Dublin projects where they're doing different things, and you can actually, uh, partner with them. Fantastic. Proud of you, young lady.
Thank you.
Wow. And we'll get a Krispy Kreme out of this, I'm hoping.
I hope so. I like donuts.
I do, too. Proud of you, darling.
Thank you.
Keep on doing what you're doing, okay?
I will.
This is Naima. We are almost done, ladies and gentlemen. Listen, we're gonna take a commercial break, uh, just quickly, and we'll be back with the rest of the city council members, all right?
Growth, it's what we all want. It means doing what it takes, getting up every morning and making it happen. And we couldn't agree more. Because your success is our success. At Morris Bank, we're banking on you.
And we are back, ladies and gentlemen. We've been having a wonderful time here at Dublin City Hall, meeting the youth city council members. We've got another fantastic young lady with us here today, and she's gonna introduce herself to you all. And tell us a little bit about her platform and her new position.
Um, I'm Kiana Jones. I'm a sophomore at Dublin High School. I am in many organizations, such as, I'm a football competition and basketball cheerleader. I'm also in ROTC.
Wait a minute. Football, basketball, and competition cheerleading?
Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic. All right. Now, tell us about what your position is here.
I'm at-large.
At-large. That's the city.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, tell us about your campaign. I mean, how was the campaign trail?
It was scary.
What are some of the things about it that was scary? I mean, some, the fear of the unknown, of course, not quite sure what to expect.
Yes, ma'am, not knowing who's running and getting up in front of the whole student body and telling them why they should vote for you.
What did you tell them?
I told them that I would try to make our city a better place and be a voice for the youth.
Very good. Now, is there anything in particular about that, about making it a better place, that you want to speak about?
More entertainment, and I think we should bring some soup, more soup kitchens.
Very good. Are you a cook?
I'm a...